Sure. Five, four. Hey guys. So in today's video, I'm gonna be going over some more pandas. And likewise, something I've been working on a lot is creating more flashcards for scikit-learn. Um, and then my next step after that is gonna be finishing up my TensorFlow. I'm about halfway, a little over halfway with TensorFlow. And then maybe PyTorch, I might do it, but really my goal is to move on to React after this. Um. So yeah, so for those of you that don't know, this in front of us is Anki. All Anki is is a flashcard set that is designed to um, designed to help you remember things with regards to spaced repetition. And my thought process is that if I go through all these flashcards that, theoretically speaking, I should only need to study my flashcards about once a quarter, maybe. Maybe spend a good week to two weeks just going over the flashcards again and again and again. So I'm able to remember all the information. So with today's video, I'm gonna start with pandas and then I might move into scikit-learn. Or I might just create another video. But um, as I go back and forth between pandas and scikit-learn, I will eventually just start doing Kaggle datasets. Um, and those might be also a like a third type of video. So maybe three videos a day or maybe just one long one. I don't know, we'll see and then we'll just kind of uh go over this. Um, so yeah, so for this video, I'll just go ahead and just kind of dive right in. Um, but I'm not sure which one, so. Let's see, so the advanced topics, which would be pretty much review converting SQL to pandas, windows visuals, bins again. Um, that's Python now. So let's go ahead and let's just do some review with this and then we'll just kind of dive into some of the older topic, other topics. And for those that don't know, sometimes an answer will show, so then we'll just try to need to re-guess what the question would actually be. So when working with pandas. Um. That kind of already gave us the answer. So in essence, how would you be able to find the cumulative sum of a specific value in a dataset? Um, and obviously we have the answer in front of us if you can see. Maybe I might need to make it a little bigger, maybe not. But the point is that you'd use data frame dot column. Like you'd call your data frame column and then you just use dot cumulative sum. And then that would go ahead and give us the cumulative sum of all the values as we see with our fair dataset. So I'm gonna go ahead and switch back and forth between Colab and Anki. But uh, and that was just some practice for rolling windows. But um, if we want to do like the cumulative sum, we do data frame dot um fair. And then cumulative sum. And then from there, we could either do axis equals one or axis equals uh zero. So if we were to go ahead and do axis equals one. The result would be no access named one for the series, but if we went ahead and did zero instead. We would see that this is the cumulative sum of all of the rows. So. Yeah, so I'll just kind of leave out that. The reason that we're using zero for the rows is because we take this row, this row, this row and this row. And then we're taking just the sum of um the fair column. So and the reason that we weren't able to use one is because, I mean, we wouldn't really be able to go uh fair. Where we're fair is we wouldn't be able to go fair, 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 right? So. In essence, we're using one for the axis or zero for the axis, which is the row. So if we were to see the answer, we would be able to see what the question would be, what would this do? And it would return the cumulative sum. So that one's pretty good. Um. I feel that I'd be able to remember that in five days. So the next one is, how can you use pd dot two date time to guess the date and time? So you would pretty much just use just that. What you would do is you'd go ahead and wrap this in a print statement. So it would be, let's actually zoom in, see if I could zoom in more. It'd be like a here when they were to go ahead and wrap that in a. Print. And then from there, you'd go ahead and enter um whatever the information might be. So we would maybe even be able to say like. I'm not sure if this would work, but August. Trying to think if it would be like maybe oh eight, oh eight, oh eight, so like maybe 2008 instead. Let's see if that would work. Nope. Um, but let's go ahead and see what the answer would be. So what I was trying to do is I was trying to recreate whatever one of them might be for an example. And if we were to go ahead and print like this string, it'd be twenty nineteen dash oh eight, which would be the month. So year, four, um four Ys, month, and then day. And then likewise, we could use um just different formatting in essence. So we could either do year first or month, day, year, or even write it out, August one twenty nineteen. So if we were to go ahead and write this out. One uh twenty nineteen, I thought was right. We would get the same output in essence. So the goal though is to remember that this actually exists. So pd dot two date time, making sure that that exists. Um. Honestly, I'd probably just Google if something if I needed to convert the date time. So I'm just gonna click good, so I don't need to see this for another twenty five days. So next up is pd dot two numeric. This one's actually also quite good to know. Um, and I, yeah, I'll just dive into it. So what's happening here is we have our pandas that we're calling. And then we're saying two numeric. And all that that's doing is it is evaluating um this specific column, which is our meal price column. And it's gonna go ahead and return any errors if there um, if the values are not numeric. And this is gonna be useful to when working with um different data types in a specific column. So for example, if meals prices had. Two string values in the column and they also had the remainder were just numeric, whether that be an integer or a float. Um, the two strings would then be considered errors. And from there, what it would do is it would go ahead and do reverse, which means it'll go ahead and validate the two string values and we'll set them to nan or give them a null value. So these would be the options for the error that you could use. So you can either use raise or ignore. Um, and then this would obviously just raise an exception. And then ignoring it, which kind of blow by uh the two string values. So just know that pd dot two numeric is generally useful for when you're working with values that are strings in a specific column um rather than uh integers. So just know like when you're working in the wild that a lot of different columns will um, they're gonna have a lot of interesting data. It's just gonna be just pretty much mixed up, so. Um, this would have been the question of how we would be able to identify the uh the class type, I mean. We'd be taking the data frame, the column, and we'd say apply lambda of X. So for every object, every value in this column, we're, we wanna return what the type is, what the data type is. And then we're gonna go on, going to want to count how many of those instances there are. So there are forty nine thousand instances of integers in the column itself. And then in this one, there are two string values in there. And just know that if there are null or nan values, then they will also return as string values. So you're gonna wanna make sure you check um uh nan or null values. So yeah, so I feel pretty confident in remembering this and likewise in remembering this. So I'm gonna go ahead and wanna see this in a week, so or six days, so I'll click on hard. Um, and it looks like we're just returning a bunch of answers right now. So in essence, if you don't know already, if we were already gonna go ahead and do Titanic dot core, this will return a correlation. And all correlation does is it evaluates the correlation between the two columns. So survived, which is equal to one, um that's a perfect correlation. One is a perfect correlation, the closer to one, the better. So if you want to create a machine learning algorithm that predicts whether or not someone survives on the Titanic, which this is the Titanic dataset, then you're gonna wanna go ahead and um run dot core and then evaluate which uh columns are the ones that are most likely correlated to survive. So. That's pretty easy. Next up, this also looks like an answer. And then we'll go ahead and try two more, so this one and then one more. And if there are more answers, then I'm just gonna move on to another uh flashcard set and I'll just go over this on my own time. So what we have here is mask one gives us true or false. If it's male or not. And then Titanic males returns location of all true values. So this again is another answer, but if we had to figure this out, how could you locate males in our Titanic dataset? And how could you ensure? I guess that would be it. How would you be able to identify uh males in our Titanic dataset that are equal to or um older than twenty two? So if you had to, how could you figure that out? So one of the ways that I can think of. If we wanted to, what we could do is we could go ahead and do data frame. And we'd wanna be able to locate males, so. Equal to male. And if we were gonna go ahead and run this, we'd get the air. So that would go ahead and return. All males, male values. And if we wanted to go ahead and return that are also older than. Twenty two, what we could do is we could do. Um, greater than or equal to twenty two, if I'm not mistaken. Let's go ahead and run it. So this would just be one example of being able to identify um data based on a specific filter. So this would be very similar to a where clause in SQL. So if we were gonna go ahead and see what the answer would be for this. And by the way, there are more than more ways of being able to identify specific values outside of just this. So if we needed to. What we would see is we would see that mask one equals Titanic dot sex, which is equal to male. And this is all that this one's really identifying, just pretty much where the males are located. So that's pretty easy, so I'll click on good. And then finally, um, yeah, so this is actually also quite good to know. So. If we were to work with a dataset. How would you be able to count the number of rows that are not null? So for example, if we want to identify the number of rows that are null, what we would do is we do data frame dot is NA. Um, actually, let's go ahead and do it on another column. So what we would do is we do data frame dot is NA. And then we do dot sum. If we were to run that, we'd be able to see all of the null values. And for those of you that have worked with this Titanic dataset before, just know that it looks like the update of the dataset. So there are additional columns right here, for example. Now, this will go ahead and return um all the nan values. And if we wanted to see the. Sum of like not null values, so rather than having this as zero, it would be the length of the data frame, which would be eight hundred and fifty. So we'd expect to see eight hundred and fifty not null values. So if we were gonna go ahead and run it again, so if we did df dot um not, not NA dot sum. What we'd return is. Should be eight fifty. Yep, so we'd see that this value is eight hundred and fifty. And then we'd also be able to see that there are a ton of um different body types, maybe that's body weight. But um yeah, this will return not null. And then this will return is null, like they are null. So I feel pretty good with that as well. Um, I'll click on easy for that. And this is fun. How would you be able to bring many or multiple data um values together? So what this is, is working with uh pandas dot concat. And all that's happening is, for example, it is taking the values of a specific data, piece of data. And it's just pretty much building on top of each other. So like if it starts at twenty thirteen, it'll have all the data from twenty thirteen. And then another dataset from twenty fourteen can be brought in and it could be stacked below twenty thirteen, so we'd have twenty fourteen. And then twenty fifteen would do the same thing and then twenty sixteen and so on. So. All that concatenation is really doing is it's, if you're familiar with SQL, just think of it as a um, as a union all. But um, it's not necessarily the traditional concatenate, what we're used to. Like in SQL, what it would do is it'd bring the first name and the last name together into one column. And that would be a concatenation. But with pandas, it's more of a like a union all. So. That one's pretty easy as well, so I'm just gonna do one month, so we don't need to see it again. And then this should be actually a good one. So how can we join the below with a left join? So in essence, for those of you that are familiar with SQL, um how would you be able to do a left join um with two different datasets? And what we wanna join on is the subject ID column. So if we had to. We'll go ahead and move this over. We had to, if we were gonna go ahead and join on the subject ID column, what we could do, at least this is my estimate, is we do data frame dot join, oops, dot join. From there, we'd have data frame and then we'd do. How equals left. So that's actually the default. And then from there, we'd go ahead and do on, which is equal to subject ID. Now, because both of these datasets, they have the subject ID, which is right here. Is um, it makes it easy for the join. But if theoretically that it did not have the left join, then what we could do is we could do a left suffix. And then that would be the, the first dataset, which would be right here. And then the second dataset would be right here, that would be the right suffix. Right, or R suffix. And then from there, we would just give whatever the column name is. So it would be column, right side, right data. And then this one would just be. Column, left data. You can also go ahead and actually call uh, if you want to actually join, let's say on the index, what you could do is also do index. But um, let's go ahead and see what the answer is to this flashcard. And another option would also be merge, so pd dot merge. And then it would be just taking the left dataset, which would be the, this one right here. And then the right one, which would then be this one right here. And then you'd be joining on the subject ID and then how he goes left, generally speaking, I believe that one's just the default. So pd dot join and pd dot merge should both be it. Um, and for those of you that are curious, and this is actually just as much practice for myself as it is for you. Um, I would imagine maybe you wouldn't be able to learn as well by just listening to me talk. But what I would advise is that you create your own flashcards and then went through them again and again and again. Um, so yeah, so that would be one option. The other option, like I said, is join. So I feel really confident with my personal joins, so I'm gonna go ahead and just click on good or easy. Um, let's go with good for twenty five days and I'll review it later. So. Next, we have, what is the blow output? How can you locate rows that are null or nan on the embarked column? So it kind of goes back to what we were working on before. Um, if you remember, how would you be able to identify null or nan values? So if you remember, what we would do is we do data frame dot is NA dot sum. And then that would go ahead and return all of the null and nan values from the entire dataset or data frame. But if you wanted to specifically identify embarked, what you could do is you would do dot embarked. And then that would go ahead and return the value that we're seeking by based on a specific column. So if we were gonna show the answer, or what we could do is we could do Titanic dot locate, so we'd locate the actual value. Um, and let's go ahead and actually copy that then, so we could see. Run it. Falses. Data frame dot locate. And then that would return the value that we're seeking. So it looks like maybe the dataset was updated since this was taken, but regardless, um, we are able to look at this specific uh row with df dot locate. So that's pretty easy. And then this was the one that we actually already just went over. So. With regards to this dataset, it's asking again, um. How can you fill? Nan values with the median value? So after being able to locate that there are two string values in this specific column with this code. And then after running this one next with our pd dot two numeric, so it took the two values that were shown as class or that were shown as strings in this column. It pretty much turned them into a nan or null value with this. So the next portion after one, two, three, three is what we're trying to guess, we're trying to figure out is, how can we fill these two values with the median value of the column and then convert them to an integer? So that one's actually gonna be pretty tough. So what I'm thinking is, if we were gonna go ahead and stick with our invoice, which is our meal price. And we wanted to be able to fill the values with median and then convert them to a an integer. My immediate uh gut reaction is to go ahead and take our column, so it'd be invoices and then meal price. And then from there, it'd be fill NA. And then I believe, I don't know the actual. The actual key of what it would be, so if we're gonna go ahead and do fill NA. I guess value equals median, would that work? What we could do is we could do, because it says that I'll take a, a scaler, a dictionary, a series or data frame. So we're just gonna stick with a, a series right here. So it could be, um, I'm going back to this column, but in essence, what I'm doing is I would take the median. So we do invoice, invoices, then we do meal price again, because this is the value that we want. And then we'd go ahead and do dot median. Me, how do you spell that? Yeah, median. And then from there, I believe that we'd be good. So the reason that I'm retyping this though is because I want to make sure that we fill the values with the median, filling any uh nan or null values. Now, this um is kind of a workaround, I guess. But there is gonna be another way of doing that with um lambda, uh when we flip over the uh flashcard. And what I'm doing next, I know I'm jumping all over place, but pretty much after we filled the value, fill the nan value with the median right here. I wanna make sure we have that. So once we fill the nan value with the median price right here for this specific column. Column, we're gonna go ahead and wrap this in then a, another statement. And it's saying convert it to an integer, so I'm hoping that this would work. But um, let's actually go ahead and see what the answer is and then let's test this. But I'll use it for our uh fair column, because we do have null values in our fair column. So let's go ahead and see if that is the median as well. So let's go ahead and see what the answer is. So what it's saying here is. Convert the offending values into np dot nan. So kind of starting again where we were initially at. In order to get rid of the string values, we ran this and that converted them into a nan or a null value. And we saved that to our invoices, to the updated column. And then from there, we're gonna go ahead and update the column again. And we're gonna go ahead and do fill NA, so just like I did. Dot median. And it converts it. And then from there, so I guess I was on the right path with regards to the dot median. But what happens next is you can do dot as type int. And then that'll go ahead and convert it into an integer. Um, but I'm also, I also believe that we could do this, which is a Python function, which is just pretty much int. And you're converting it to a uh, an integer. So let's go ahead and see if this will work for our fair column in the Titanic dataset and then compare the two. So all I'm doing is just calling the fair column. Data frame fair. And let's go ahead and see if this runs or if it gives us an error. So it does give us an error, series object, no attribute median, so I must have misspelled it. Um, yep. Good, let's see if it works. Nope, cannot convert the series to a class int. It's fine, and then let's go ahead and do dot as type. Int, let's get rid of the rest of it. Let's go ahead and run it. And then that looks like it'd also work. So rather than um continuing to save the values here. For example, like saving it to an updated version of the column itself, um, I pretty much just ran it here. But um yeah, so that'd just be another way of being able to figure, figure out how to fill out, fill these values. So although it was a little tough, I wouldn't mind personally practicing it again in six days, but. Yeah, no, I think six days would be good, so then I could just get more repetition. And then this one, we've already gone over. How would you be able to identify the columns that have male? And you would first go ahead and do Titanic dot sex equals to male. And that'd return true, false, true, false, true, false, based on if it was a male or not. Um, but another thing is, is that can you, do you remember how we'd be able to locate the specific um, the specific rows? So we'd be able to see that they're a male, twenty eight years old or whatever, and then that they're sailing from um S or whatever the embarked destination is. How would you be able to see the entire route itself, not just true or false? So what you do is you'd be able to do data, data frame dot locate. And then from there, it'd be data frame dot sex, which is equals to male. And then we'd be able to see the row. Perfect, so that one's really easy, so I'll see that in like a month. Um, and that's actually kind of like why I'm doing Anki. So even though all of these my flashcard sets are fairly new, if, for those of you that saw how quickly I clicked on it, um, it said one point five months, so I'm gonna go ahead and see that in thirty, what is that, forty five days from now? So and then from there, it goes from forty five days to like three months. And so it's like the more you practice, the more you should be able to retain it. And then the better eventually it'll get at the programming and then you'll be able to transition into learning other things. So at least that's my goal, that's why I wanna do data science first, finish up with um AI, since that's actually what I've been working on for the last couple of years. And then just immediately move, move into a, into a MERN stack. So quite ambitious, but um, yeah. And then from there, um into MVPs, Minimum Viable Products for Startups. So that's just kind of like my high overarching goal. So that was a little tangent, um, do we wanna keep doing these or should we move on to the other stuff? Let's go ahead and finish up with these, I'll just kind of try to bust these ones out. And then I think I'll just create a second video for scikit-learn instead. So thanks for bearing with me on this one. If you want, please feel free to click on the links below, they should have the GitHub. And then I'll see if I can link my own flashcard set, so that way you guys can start practicing them as well, rather than just watching me do this. I'm creating these videos um for myself as well as for. I'm creating these videos um for myself as well as for just getting used to uploading to um YouTube and then having a um. Making it a habit, so that way it's just like just go at like ten AM or whatever time it is, so. Um I guess I'll just kinda keep doing these, so what does the blue output for the Titanic data sets? Um how can you drop columns with a NAND or a null value? So it's kind of a good question, so as we see right here, we have decks with NAND, 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 so these values are not shown. And it's asking, how can you drop columns with NAND or null values, so we dropped the entire column itself. So what we would do. Is we'd go ahead and. Do you have any more, yep. What we do is we'd go ahead and drop the column, so we'd call our data uh data frame, and then from there, we do drop NA. And then in place equals to true. And we'd wanna go ahead and drop. Access equals one, so that should drop all columns that are there. So let's go ahead and see if that's what the answer is. So this is another way of doing it, but to be Titanic to drop NA access equals one like we have here. I did in place equals true, but um and I think that might be a default, but then we're gonna go ahead and see how equals any. So what is the default for how? How, so the default is already any, so then we could change that from any to all, and then is in place equal to true? So in place is equal to false. And then from there, we're gonna go ahead and call dot shape, so then that'll just give us the shape of the data frame. So rather than having, I believe, seven columns, it's now six with eight hundred and ninety-one rows. Or it's nine, sorry about that, the original was nine columns. So that's pretty easy, so I'll just click on easy. Um next up, we have a dot copy, so dot copy will return a copy of a select value. So for example, if we wanted to return a copy of our data set, what we could do is do data frame dot copy. And then from there, that would go ahead and return a copy, and what we could do is we could save it as a variable. And then we could go ahead and manipulate this variable with um drop NA, for example, access equals one. Uh in place equals true. We're gonna go ahead and run that, oops. And let's also return the shape. Hmm maybe not, would I need to import? Numpi. Has no attribute shape, 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 shape. We could do the length then, I guess, no. Or better yet, what we could do. Ha, so that was dumb, so it'd be DF two, and then we'd add the info right there. So then we see the information with regards to what's left over from our data frame two, and if we're gonna go ahead and look at our data frame dot info, the initial one. We'd be able to see that this one has eight columns, and then this one has fifteen. So I guess that'd be just one way of being able to use data frame dot copy, so pretty much just so you can manipulate something, and then you just have a copy of it, right? So yep, it's good. So next up is this value, so for those of you that have never seen this before. How would you be able to identify a specific string value in a column? So what I mean by that is, if we're gonna look at our data frame. How would you be able to identify names? With miss in this um in this column, in our name column, how could you identify all the rows with miss? So one way of being able to do that is we'd be able to use starts with and ends with. So if we wanted to, we could use data frame dot name, but contains, because we want any individual that has this. And we want to read as miss, if we're gonna run that, we got the air. But dot string, so we forgot the dot string, dot STR. And we'd be able to see that there's a true or false value based on that, and now if we wanted to see all of them with miss, what we could do is we could do data frame dot locate. And then wrap it in brackets and run it again, and then that would go ahead and return every. Every name that contains miss, so this is very useful for working with strings or whatever else you might be working with as well. So. We've got miss, and then the only other two then would be, we also have ends with. And then starts with, so starts with would be pretty much anyone that has missed at the very beginning. And then likewise, ends with would be anyone that has uh miss at the like, at the end of whatever their um their name would be. So the reason that we did contains is because we wanted to just see um theoretically who has miss in their name, so. And then let's go ahead and do one more. So that one's easy, so see how it shows up in like two point two months, so I'll study that in two months, I guess. So what we have here is what does the blow output for the Titanic data set? So if we have Titanic dot count, access equals columns, or Titanic dot count, access equals one, what would it return? So if you've never worked with this before, one again is a column, so this is in essence, they're asking the same thing. Because we're counting on them. So if we're gonna go ahead and run that code, so it'd be data frame dot count, and then from there, it'd be access equals one. We would see. We would see all of the. Rows, how many values they have for that row? And what I mean by this is like if we're gonna go ahead and see data frame dot head again, and let's just look at the first row as an example, so we have eleven. Eleven shy, we would see that we have one missing value for the age, another one for the cabin. And then another two for the body in the home, so what it's doing is it'll return um the count of. Ax uh of columns, if it has a value for that column. So we see fourteen here, eleven here, and we see that a lot of these are just missing values, so if we're gonna go ahead and see what the answer would be. We would see that it counts the number of columns by row, if a NAND or null value populates in a row, a column is not counted. Notice rows with zero um as a NAND value check, so that's just something else to kinda keep in mind, I've never. I've personally not worked with it, but I'm sure it could be useful for like a for loop or for filling specific values or something like that. So again, this is all just practice and is to really just kinda help with data analysis and data manipulation. Um so what I'm thinking is I'll go ahead and end this video here, I'll go ahead and start another video for psychic learn. And then from there, I'll probably just dive into maybe some cackle a little bit later. But um yeah, also go ahead and end this video here, if you like, please feel free to click on any of the links below, I'll go ahead and link. Hopefully upload this um flashcard data set and all my other flashcards onto Anki, so then you guys can download them and just. Practice on your own, and then likewise, uh if you're interested, feel free to book a session with me, where I'll go ahead and. Tutor or assist anyone with regards to data science or data analysis. Um and then I'm also open to SQL as well, just know that uh I'd probably be better for like a MySQL or Postgres SQL. Rather than Oracle or T SQL, so I'll go ahead and end this video here, um thanks for watching, and I'll go ahead and see you in the next one, thanks.